I was going to be a meeting with all of the people. It's a good one.
Sean's looking at me. He's checking the meeting.
Yes.
Um, oh.
Oh, yeah.
Her heart rate went down to forty. And I can't get it back up, so I put her in hot. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This time we're going to call to order the City of Gallatin Council meeting. First thing is Ms. Kitchell, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennel.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Thann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton is absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Next, we have approval of amendments for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion from Councilwoman George, a second by Councilwoman Linda Love. Any questions, any changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Next, we're going to come down to public recognition. I'd like to say something is I wasn't here last Tuesday night, but I did watch the meeting. And it was disgraceful, and there was a lot of disruptive behavior. And I seen what the mayor had to go through to get the meeting in order, and I'll do the same thing. Need to be kind to one another, no disruptive behavior, calling people out, seeing you waiting, such things. I'll gavel you down, I'll correct you second time, I asked the police to escort you out of the building. With that being said, I think the mayor would like to make a comment.
I didn't know you were going to say that. I do, before I say what I was going to say, I do think that you were going to vote on the deferrals that were requested before we did public comment. Do you want to do that?
Yes, ma'am. Items four, five, and six, at the request of the applicant, have been deferred. So if you're in the audience and you're wanting to speak or comment on this right here, there might be another time in the horizon, but tonight, we're not going to get into that. One thing we need to do on the top of the agenda is vote to remove that from the agenda, items four, five, and six. Do we need to go ahead and do that right now?
I think it's items four through seven.
Seven, four, five, and seven.
Items four through seven, and I think it would be proper form for this council to vote to defer those items. Now, I would certainly say anyone that's here that feels, you know, that showed up to speak for that, certainly you are welcome to. But just so you're clear, it will not be discussed this evening.
Okay, items four, five, six, and seven, do you have a motion to defer?
I'll move that we defer those.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman Love, we got a second by Councilman John D. Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. All right, now we move down to public recognition. When you come to the mic, please state your name and your address, and you're allowed five minutes to speak. And if you're going to speak, it's going to be items that are pertaining to the agenda. The agenda.
Work session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything.
City business, so come on if you won't speak.
But I did want to comment, follow up on what you said, just as a point of privilege, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I was very disheartened, very sad and dismayed by what happened last week. I felt like it was a poor reflection of our city. I feel like we have a long history of respectful dialogue here. Gallatin has one of the most permissive policies there is for allowing people to speak, and I'm proud of that. And I think that I, I think that this council, we always try to be respectful, and we have had so many people who have addressed this council and been respectful. And I know that that culture doesn't exist everywhere in this country, but I think here in Gallatin, it's very, very important that we maintain a culture of civility. And what you said about being kind, I appreciate, because I think at the end of the day, you can never go wrong with extending grace or being kind. So know that we're up here trying to do jobs that aren't always fun, aren't always easy. I know a lot of people think that, you know, the growth just jazzes us all, but no, it really just stresses us all. And we're doing the best that we can, and we understand that citizens are affected and impacted, and we want the best for everybody, but things conflict. So extend grace, be kind, and let's all work together for the best community that we can have. With that, nothing further.
All right, now we're open for public recognition.
Good evening, City Council members. Good evening, Mayor. You have a packet in front of you.
Ma'am, would you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, thank you, yes.
You're okay.
Linda Ing, property owner, two twenty-five Nichols Lane. You have a packet in front of you with some pictures, because a picture does a thousand words. And the topic I would like to speak on tonight is Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard, specifically the proposed extension of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard through the Kurt Patrick Farm, and then connecting on down south to somewhere along Peach Valley Road. We have formed a concerned citizens group called the Nichols Super Block. And this is a really wide territory, Nichols Lane to the north, Peach Valley to the south, Woods Ferry to the east, and Lock Four to the west. And then within that super block, Nichols Circle, Brewer Drive, Connie Drive, and another small street as well called Anna. So I'd like to speak to you this evening about the proposed extension of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard. If you'd like to follow along with me, you're welcome to. Page two and three in your packet shows a map of the super block, and you can see the proposed developments on page two in yellow, and they're proposed in orange, actually. Woods Ferry Crossing is in yellow, and then Nichols Place in green to the north. And then the two farms to the west and to the east of Nichols Circle that are both up for sale simultaneously. And so we're talking estimated, I think, one hundred and thirty-five acres for the Kurt Patrick Farm, and a lot more than that, I don't have the specific number, but a lot more than that for the Green Farm to the west of Nichols Circle. So this is an enormous territory with enormous potential for development and density, and I'm sure you can understand the residents are rightly very concerned about what's going to happen within this area, especially since it's all coming up for sale at the same time. On page three of your packet, you can see the proposed roads. These were drawn up by the County Commission in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, and then they were resurfaced in the twenty twenty planning document. And so they are more than lines on a map. They have not been built yet, but the City Council minutes show that they're going to be built in segments by whatever developers develop the land along the way. So if you look at the map at the top of page three, you can see how the long road that goes from the north, Nichols Lane, down to the south of Peach Valley, is slated to go through the middle of a forest, and also over the top of what are wetlands and streams recently identified by T-Deck. And I have those diagrams for you as well. If you'll turn to page four and five in your packet, the residents of Nichols Circle are especially concerned because the placement of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard extension could dramatically impact the quality of life on Nichols Circle. And keep in mind, we have not heard whether this is supposed to be a two-lane road, three-lane road, highway, who knows what's planned for this road, but we really don't want that in our backyard, as I'm sure you can imagine. Also, there's been a proposed linkage on the west to Brewer Drive. And we have spoken with the city planner and said vehemently that we do not want Nichols Circle and Brewer Drive to be connected to some brand-new and immense development, because that makes Nichols Circle, which is currently landlocked, has one in, one out, makes it a through street. We don't have, we're not going to have pedestrians walking that anymore. We're going to have fifty mile an hour traffic with people cutting through. So obviously, we don't want that connection to happen. Looking at page five in your packet, you can see the wetlands impacted. I've marked those for you. And then go on to page six and seven. At the top of six is the T-Deck report done on the Green property with all of the wetlands marked and the streams marked. Now, this is the Green property, as I mentioned. The Kurt Patrick property to the east of Nichols Circle has not had a T-Deck report performed, but we can all tell you that within that forest is a vast stream system, and that it all empties directly into the Cumberland. So this is a very special area for wildlife and for habitats. Following that, you have pictures taken from the T-Deck report by the scientists that investigated the land of the Green Farm. Beautiful streams, right? Lots of water. It is not a dry stream bed, as the city planner's office previously believed. They found benthic organisms, which are higher-life forms of crustaceans, salamanders, saw salamander this morning in the backyard. So this is a very special area. It is a wetland, and we want to see it revitalized and protected. I hope that you will take the time to review this packet, and we hope to see the creation of a committee in Gallatin that will be charged with protecting the resources beyond the beautification committee, which picks up litter. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good timing.
Thank you, this is a good pamphlet.
Okay, next.
Evening, my name is Mary Jinung. I live on Lock Four Road, eleven hundred. I live directly across from the Green Farm. I've lived there thirty-two years. I'm very concerned about the possible development, and I understand that anyone can sell their land. I'm not saying you can't sell your land. But we do have a beautiful area out there with the green, like she said, Linda said, with the wetlands, we have lots and lots of wildlife, foxes, deer, anything, you know, all kinds of animal life. And we also have an issue out there with our road. Lock Four Road can't handle any more congestion. It's dangerous. But my segue is that I'm very concerned about the environmental impact that's happening to our community, to just to Gallatin. And the Green Farm is going to impact me as a resident and my other neighbors in a very detrimental way. I hope that you'll take and consider what Ms. Linda has presented to you. She's done a great job of researching and looking at all the factors that are out there. She is one of the, I would call someone of a expert, because she has spent a great deal of time trying to work through this and help us. And our block, which is Lock Four, Peach Valley, Woods Ferry, and Nichols, and Nichols Court, we all are going to come together and come back to you and talk with you again about it, because we do feel that we need to preserve the beautiful area out there in a way that it's going to work for everybody. In my dream, it would be that the city would buy the land and put a beautiful park out there, just like they did at the end of the road, but I know that's expensive. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, do we have an idea when anything will be on the agenda concerning this area? So there's nothing on the agenda tonight pertaining to Lock Four?
You might ask Mr. McCord if anything's come to planning. I don't know.
Bill, can you answer that right there, so some of these people?
We've had meetings with the, with some potential developers of the Green Farm, and as I understand, there's also a pre-application meeting that will be scheduled. I'm not sure if it's the first or second pre-app meetings that we hold in May on the Kurt Patrick piece, which is the eastern portion of that area. So it's possible something could come.
Still a little premature.
Summer or something, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anyone else in the audience like to, come on preacher?
Bishop A. Michael Clark, nine twenty-three Southwestland Avenue here in Gallatin. This Friday, July the fifteenth, we will be hosting the seven last words. I am a pastor of Flames of Fire Institutional and a jurisdictional bishop in the Church of God in Christ. Are you speaking to me? Yes. That's a no-no.
This Friday, April fifteenth?
It's July fifteenth, I mean, yeah, April fifteenth. I'm thinking about summertime.
I can tell.
All right. All right, and we'll be having seven different preachers that'll be preaching about the seven things, sayings that Jesus Christ declared on the cross. Our own Councilman John D. Alexander will be with us, and I've been supportive of you, and I would appreciate if you come by and see us. We'll be at the venue, which is ten twenty-three Suite B, Southwater Avenue, starting at six P.M. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none? I'm sorry, Mimi, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Councilman Fennel. My name's Michelle Juvent, and I live at thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike, and just listening to Ms. Ing and Mrs. Jinung about these two farms. I have heard that they are not in the city, that they would need to be annexed into the city if they were going to be developed. So I'm not sure if they are or they're not in the city. But this is very concerning to me, especially, I mean, you'll remember what I said to you all last week about how we're just, it's too much, too fast, and there's two annexations that were deferred tonight that are out Hartsville Pike. And then this is, the words that Ms. Ing used were like a massive development, and that is concerning, because if we're going to keep annexing more and more, it's like we're just on fast forward with our development. And right now, we need to hit the pause button instead, because you know how short-staffed we are with so many of our departments, and we need to hit the pause button. And I asked you to do a moratorium on annexations until we can get caught up, and I think that would be a good thing to do right now, because it's just not the right time to keep annexing more land into the city when we're already behind on a lot of services. So that was it. I said I'd be quick. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Linda Marandino. I'm at ten ninety-two Lock Four Road. One more concern regarding the farm and the sale and the building. Last summer, when one oh nine was being worked on, and they were, everybody was stuck in traffic, and they kept cutting down Lock Four Road. We had trucks flying down that road, and when I think about being across the road and having retail and more housing, there's just, we're kind of landlocked. There was a car accident one time, and you can't get in or out on that road. There's no way. It's just that and the farm, and there's no way in and out. To add this traffic, I mean, we get stuck on Nichols, by Nichols at the stop sign. Every afternoon, it starts building up, and I just don't think the infrastructure is there to just add this kind of stuff, besides for the fact that I think we have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, and they fly by my house at between forty, I sit out there and watch them fly by at forty-five to fifty miles an hour. And one of my neighbors, she said she's almost been hit numerous times trying to come out of her driveway, and they're just using it like a highway, and I just don't think it can take any more traffic, and I just, it's just dangerous at this point. And nobody follows the speed limits, and it's crazy to add more to it. It's just going to be dangerous for anybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think we seen another light. Sir, she was, she been up twice, I'm sorry, we'll get you after her.
My name is Vicki Hendrick, and I live on the Butler Farm, and it is on Lock Four and Peach Valley Road. We have sixty acres, and it's full of deer, turkey, red fox, you name it, it's out there. The last meeting we had, somebody made a remark about, we can't worry about the fluffy bunnies, but the deer, they cross the road whenever they get scared. When you start building and you start blowing all this rock up in Sumner County, the first thing that's going to happen is those deers are going to run, and they're going to run out in front of people, and people are going to be wrecking cars. Back in two thousand seven, most of y'all remember the tornado that came through that hit Ball State and come across Nichols Lane and Lock Four?
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six, okay. And my husband was standing in the back of Kroger watching that, and he came home trying to check on me and our son, and he wasn't able to get that, thank God, he was on his motorcycle, and he was able to go around trees to get to the house. And bless his heart, he went back with a chainsaw to saw that up so people could get to their homes, because there were trees down at Nichols Lane, you just couldn't get around. So the lady that spoke before said that people fly down through there. Yes, they do, and whenever there's any kind of construction going on out one oh nine, they come through my road, which is Peach Valley Road, and they fly. And when you call the police and tell them that there's somebody flying down the road, they usually say, what's your name, what's your address, you know, what's your telephone number, and they're gone, you know, in the fast cars. So I have a lot of older neighbors out there that are not able to get out and walk anymore. I used to walk when my child was little up Lock Four Road when we lived in the old farmhouse there on the corner of Lock Four, and I never worried about walking with him when he was in a stroller. I wouldn't walk with a child out there right now, so it really concerns me just because of the wildlife, and the roads are small, I don't know how you're going to widen them. And a couple of years ago, y'all had a festival out at the end of Lock Four Road. What was the name of that?
Fire on the Water.
Huh?
Fire on the Water.
Yeah. It was terrible coming down Lock Four Road that day, and I think most people remember that, but anyway, I mean, we have the restaurant right across the street that, you know, you have fireworks and stuff, so that disturbs animals too, but, you know, I guess that's just our concern out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My name is Ardrus, sorry, you said, live at four ninety Peach Valley Road. Just to reverberate some of the comments that's been made, my concern is public safety for Lock Four Road and Peach Valley Road. Peach Valley Road is becoming a cut-through to get to one oh nine, and there are absolutely no shoulders on Peach Valley Road. Now, if the council allows a high-density project to be built in the area that we're talking about, that just simply dumps more traffic into Peach Valley Road. If you remember, maybe Ms. Alexander can remember, a few years ago, there was an accident on Peach Valley Road where a car actually left the road and went into the side of Peach Valley Church. It was nowhere for it to go. So if we produce these developments without the infrastructure to support them, I just think it would be in the last for Gallatin. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would there be, go ahead, sir.
In the research of the potential projects that's coming up on the Green Farm, there's a slave cemetery. I don't know if anybody was aware of this, but there's a slave cemetery just where Peach Valley Road goes down the hill where the water is, down in the woods to the left. That development would literally wipe that out and the streams that, you know, flow through that area. I would like to see the city, you know.
Bill, I'm sure you wrote that down, didn't you? Okay. We got it noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? You don't have to raise your hand, come on up.
My name is Lenora Wallace. I live at seventeen sixty-one Woods Ferry Road. In the afternoon, I sit in my living room or on my front porch, and when there's an accident on one oh nine, they either come up Pumping Station, cut down through Peach Valley. I have semi trucks, delivery trucks, all day long, and that's why our road gets so damaged through there, and they don't know what thirty miles an hour is. It's like Indy five hundred going down through there. And I go to the mailbox every afternoon to get my mail, and I see cars coming off the hill, and there's been a couple of times that I've just about had to jump in the ditch. So I just want to let you know, this is not Indy five hundred at Woods Ferry Road. I'm going to start sitting out there and get license plates. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would there be anybody else? Seeing none? Public recognition is closed. Next, we got mayor's comments.
I have just a few events I want to share with you all this Saturday to grade up. Well, first of all, this Friday, of course, is Good Friday, a reminder that Main Street will be closed for a while for the Living Cavalry that First Night Methodist Church is doing. On Saturday to, well, Saturday and Sunday, the Master Gardeners are having their plant sale. Says both Saturday and Sunday, nine thirty to five thirty. I'm surprised they're having it on, maybe it's the fifteenth is Friday, it's Friday and Saturday, not Saturday and Sunday. Says the day's wrong, but the date's right. So it'd be Friday and Saturday. Also on Saturday, the Gallatin Farmers Market is having their spring plant sale, that's from nine to noon on the twenty-first. This is a great opportunity for young people in our community. It's the Sumner County Youth Job and Opportunity Fair, happens at the American Job Center. It's for young people and, you know, school-age teenagers, but also young adults who are looking for seasonal employment. That's happening from three till six. That's at the American Job Center, which is located on Green Lake. Also, I want you to know that Welch College is presenting Tuck Everlasting. They're doing that on the twenty-first and the twenty-second. I'm sure that will be a fabulous production by our local college. On the twenty-second, another Good Morning Gallatin, formerly known as the Government Relations Meeting, presented by the Gallatin Chamber this month. It's going to be Dr. Del Phillips with the Sumner County School System, happening at the Hampton Inn, seven thirty to nine, again on the twenty-second. And then on the twenty-second and twenty-third is the Market in the Park at Triple Creek Park. And then the final mention I will offer is on the twenty-third is the Drug Take Pack Day, and it is across Sumner County. So if you have medications that you are finished using, you can dispose of those responsibly, and that is the day to do that, although there are some pharmacies around town that collect your unused drugs every day. So just make others aware of that. That would be all.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we're moving on to our agenda. First on the agenda is Resolution Number R twenty-two oh four dash thirty-eight. This is reappointing Richie Harville as board member of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency Board, and to represent that is James Fenton.
Thank you. Yes, we're simply reappointing Mr. Ritchie, who's been on there for four years, to another four-year term.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes. We have a second by, I think it was Steve Thann?
Oh, I think it was over here.
And in.
And in Councilman Alexander.
Okay. Second by John D. Alexander. These little blinders right here, it's hard to tell where it come from. Do we have any discussion, guys? Seeing none, let's call the vote. Motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Any opposed? All right, now we're gonna go to number two. This is Resolution Number R twenty-two oh four dash thirty-seven, Temporarily Adjusting Certain Rates of Pay. Our department head, Ms. Flood.
Good evening, everyone. In October, a resolution for temporary adjustments to certain rates of pay was approved by council. Two positions were not included for the Utilities Department. These positions are of equal positions included in the original resolution. And I'm seeking to move the equal positions forward with your blessing.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion by Councilman Hayes. We got a second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman George. Do we have any discussion? Mayor, nobody saying anything? Let's call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, Ms. Flood. Let's go on to number three is Resolution Number R twenty-two oh four dash forty-three. This is Amending Gallatin Personal Rules and Regulations Relating to Sick Leave Pool. Ms. Flood.
HR needs clarification. We've had various questions on the interpretation of the policy. It's too vague, in our opinion. Historically, the policy has been used for employees only. I'm seeking approval to define the sick pool leave is only for the use of employees' personal illness, sickness, injury, or other medical condition.
We have to do a motion on that.
Yeah, you want to move it forward because you're voting to change the personnel rules. It's simply to clarify, right now, what she's talking about, some of the confusion it creates. Sometimes people think that the sick leave pool works like family medical leave and that you can use your sick time. You can use your sick time and you can certainly use FMLA, but you cannot use the sick pool time for illness of a family member or to care for a family member. You can only use it for yourself if you're a member. And so, that's what she's seeking to clarify.
Motion to send it on.
We got a motion by Councilman Hayes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, we're moving all the way down to item number eight. This is a presentation and discussion of an annexation study of point seven oh mile portion of Big Station Camp Boulevard, totaling thirteen point six plus or minus acres, locate south of Vietnam Veterans Parkway and south of the intersection of Big Station Camp Boulevard and Lakeland Drive. Bill McCord.
Bill McCord, City Planner. This next item is our presentation on the annexation study. We've had a couple of other presentations at a committee meeting and also we will have a reading of the resolution and plan of service at our next council meeting. But I think y'all are quite familiar with this. This is a request to annex the right-of-way of Big Station Camp Boulevard, the notorious right-of-way until recently, that in a nutshell was previously in the city, mostly in the city of Hendersonville. And Hendersonville changed the urban growth bound, de-annexed it, changed the urban growth boundary. And now the city has it in its urban growth boundary. And the roadway was paved not too long ago, so it's in good shape. And so, now it would be an opportunity for the city to annex the roadway. That way, the city will be able to control how well-maintained it is as well as issuing permits for driveways to and from this roadway, which we expect will be quite limited to what's been approved primarily in the city. The properties on the west side of the road are in the city of Hendersonville and/or unincorporated Sumner County. And the properties on the east side of the road, with the exception of Station Camp subdivision and one parcel adjacent to it, are in the city. The report generally just identifies the cost, projected cost of maintaining the right-of-way if the city does annex it. Of course, since it is just right-of-way, there is no tax revenue that the city will derive from having it in the city. But we will have control over the roadway as far as how we maintain it, of course. So, it'd be about, projected about sixty-seven thousand dollars per year and a variety of costs associated with having this road in the city, including long-term maintenance, even though they just paved it, most of that cost will not, that was spread out over ten years. Probably won't have nearly that cost for some time. But mowing the right-of-way, picking up litter in the right-of-way, various vehicle costs to maintain vehicles that will be servicing the right-of-way and so forth. And streetlights along the corridor as well. So, that's what involves accepting the roadway as part of the city.
Thank you, Bill. I think we've been in, we discussed this several times over the years, this particular road right here. Did Hendersonville end up paying for the pavement of that? No, who was it? County?
The developer paid for it, but we had agreed to split the cost at some point. We said that we would annex this road. Remember, there was a portion, a portion of property they wanted to keep one development altogether. And so, we couldn't annex the road until it was moved down to the urban growth boundary. But, you know, to me, that way we'll have the road. It'll be our responsibility. There won't be confusion. It won't fall into disrepair and everybody will be screaming.
So, if we wanna annex it, then we need to make a motion to send it up to council. Do we have a motion?
Well, this is just a report. This is just a findings of the report. Y'all have already had it at a council committee. So, it'll be on the council agenda from the previous council committee meeting.
Gotcha, Bill. Okay, I guess we're finished with number eight. Number nine on the agenda, this is the last item. This is additional information and renderings for Double Star Hotel, Mr. McCord.
Okay, this next item is one that y'all wanted to come back and talk about, wanted me to get some additional information on. So, again, the Double Star Hotel site is on a lot. It's adjacent to where Lowe's is, the Lowe's Preliminary Master Development Plan Site. And it's outlined there on the map. It's adjacent to Brown's Lane, but doesn't have a direct access drive to Brown's Lane. This is a photograph that, what it looks like, the property now looking southwestwardly towards Brown's Lane. Of course, you now have that excavated bluff there and I'll get into a little bit more details about that. This is what Brown's Lane looks like looking towards the northeast. And so, you can see the, a little bit, and I wish I could point with this pointer, but it doesn't work on that screen. You can see a little bit of the Lowe's building through the trees there, barely, kind of a scarlet-colored building. And, but otherwise, you're high above that property. So, as you can see from the other photograph. That's essentially about the same location roughly, but that's in the wintertime. This is the hotel. Now, this screen, this shot is a little elongated, but nonetheless, it's three hundred feet long hotel. It'll be four stories in height. But down, again, the bottom floor will be down in that lower area at roughly the same elevation as the floor of the Lowe's. And this is kind of what it would look like in the back if you didn't have the escarpment there. So, if it were level all the way to Brown's Lane, for example, at the floor of the hotel, this is kind of generally what you'd see. But that's really not a good projection. And so, what I did is kind of overlapped some, a couple of photographs. This is the exact same photograph that you saw earlier from Brown's Lane, that was summertime picture, overlaid with what the hotel would look like if you were traveling down Brown's Lane towards Nashville Pike. So, this is about the height that you would see that. And what you'll see there is about, as I mentioned, a four-story hotel. About halfway up the second-floor window is about the level of Brown's Lane. And then you'd have about thirty-five feet from that point up to the top of the hotel. And that was a little worse cut-and-paste job for the wintertime. I didn't know any other way to do it.
Appreciate your effort.
It was, yeah, I've tried to show you in the wintertime because it's gonna be different. But they have a landscaping plan that will include these, keeping these trees and having some additional trees. Now, a couple of other questions that you also asked were about, and you'll have a handout there. I gave you a handout on this. You wanted to see a photo of rendering what it would look like from Brown's Lane, so there you go. And how high above Brown's Lane will the building extend? Well, it'll be the maximum height of the building. And let me get back to, let's see, that one. See, the taller piece, it sticks up just a little higher than the rest of the building than the middle above the door. It's fifty-three feet high. The rest of the building will be fifty feet high. So, because it sits down in that hole, it obviously won't be fifty-three feet in height from Brown's Lane. What you'll have from Brown's Lane is a thirty-five foot. And again, you see the four stories, the level that you'll see from Brown's Lane, it's a little, it umulates a little bit, but it's basically halfway up through the second-floor windows.
So, Bill, right there above the top windows, right there, that's the parapet?
Yeah.
Okay, so around back, it rendered the same thing with the top of the window and the parapet up there?
Yeah, that's, that's the backside. So, it's the same kind of thing.
You know, my-
That's, that's my attempt to show what it'll look like from the road, just the portion that you'll see as you travel down.
My concern is what are they gonna do with the rock wall, the bluff right through there?
Well, that would be something that the engineering and building department will make sure that that's stabilized. And apparently, in the past, there has been some issues. And obviously, that's something that they'll take care of with construction management.
They indicated what kind of trees they're gonna put on the bank.
It's in the, in the site plan, they are going to put trees, essentially use these existing trees and supplement those with other trees.
Existing trees doesn't block the building.
No, it's not going to block the building. The building's gonna be thirty-five feet high, visibility from Brown's Lane.
I'm talking even if you were in a jacked-up pickup truck. You can see through it now. When the trees there, that are presently there, lose their leaves, you're gonna see the building.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna see the building either way. But they're gonna, they're gonna have some supplemental plantings in those, those areas where it's, I would say it's thinner trees right now. And then they'll have trees along the lot between the Lowe's in the front. I don't think one of their renderings shows that's the back. That's the front. They will have some trees there and then on the sides as well.
Is there a representative here for this development?
My issue is with the traffic.
Excuse me, Eileen?
My, my issue is with the traffic going into that parking lot.
Into the parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, Lowe's is really busy.
Hey, Andy.
Yes, sir.
You know, of course.
Eddie Lee, the Greenlee designer, the representative?
Sir?
Craig and I and Steve and Susan live in that area. I haven't had many people much concerned with this right here being down in the hole. The main thing people's asking about is the wall, what it's gonna look like between the building and bluff right there.
Yeah, I talked to the geotech engineer this week because I knew you guys had that concern. A portion of this, the, what I'm gonna call the south or eastern portion, it's back down Brown's Lane. We pulled the building about thirty, forty feet away from that wall. So, the geotech's recommendation is try to fill that back in with some soil and plant something on it. Now, the northern part, the curb's real close to the cut face, so we're gonna have to build a retaining wall there to hold the rock back. I know that's sort of a, hold the rock back, but you all have seen it as it weathers, it falls off. So, we'll have to build something there to hold it back.
One thing that was brought to my attention too, and Councilman Fan brought it up about the trees on top of the bluff. It seems like a lot of the times when we get in to the construction phase of some of these properties, we lose some existing trees that are there. And good case in point is when you go down Greenlee, Greenlee Drive where the knoll is, we had beautiful trees up and down through there. And once they started putting that development, the knoll there, we lost some of those trees and nobody ever has tried to put those trees back. I just wanna make sure that if we lose any of these things, we're gonna plant back to try to buffer that.
So, the existing trees that are there, our scope of disturbance won't be up on Brown's?
I didn't think so, but I still ask the question.
But if it makes the council feel better with the landscape plan with the final master, we'll fill it in with evergreens if that's what you guys want.
Okay.
I don't know what, I can't remember what side of the road the power lines are on.
Well, my way of looking at it also, I think it's gonna look better with that there than with a dirt hole of what we got now.
And is, the PMDP and Mr. McCord can correct me, it was always slated for some type of commercial. So, the traffic, as Ms. Eileen brought up, should be taken into account with the Lowe's plan because they, they had something planned for that since the beginning. It wasn't a hotel, but it was, it was planned for commercial.
One thing I think Ms. George was alluding to also is since we got Dutch Brothers there, and I mean, my, there's a lot of congestion right there right now. But I know that there's another exit that will be going up that ramp to go onto Brown's Lane right there too that might relieve some of that pressure.
Believe me, my teenage daughter spends a lot of my money at Dutch Brothers lately. So, it is getting quite a bit. And, but, you know, we can definitely at the FMDP with Nick's direction, take a look at the traffic, see if there's any requirements that are gonna be warranted.
Hey, excuse me.
Andy, will the parking for that be shared with the parking for Lowe's or is there a separate parking?
We have, all of our parking is contained within the site that my client owns, that we need. And sort of the parking is what limits the size of the hotel. It's also what makes it long. The shape of the lot makes it longer. But no, we need, all of our required parking will be on our site.
It's not that long, though.
No, but it's longer than it is wide because the shape of the lot, with the constraints that we have, that it is. And it's the scale.
You see the parking for that hotel coming from Brown's Lane or Nashville Pike?
Well, there is a red light at Brown's Lane, so, the path of least resistance. So, there may be. People can't get in at Lowe's. Now, if I'm going, I find it easier to get in at the Lowe's parking lot. That's me. But if it's backed up, then I'm going up to the red light.
I think I've lived there maybe ten or twelve years. I've never, and Craig, you can back me up or anybody else can, but I don't think I've ever seen cars stacked up on Brown's Lane yet.
I don't think that this would cause stacking on Brown's Lane, no. I think people would use Brown's Lane to enter the hotel because there's a red light there to get off Nashville Pike. But I don't see the cars from this hotel stacking, no more so than they do for Lowe's. I mean, the Lowe's and Dutch Brothers, they're gonna generate much more traffic than this hotel.
Got any other questions, guys? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Andy. Bill, I think you're through, aren't you?
I had a couple of other questions to answer for you. So, I explained how high the hotel would be above Brown's Lane as well as from the finished floor when we get that information. The HVAC equipment is not shown on the PMDP. That's normally shown on the FMDP. It's not something that's required by our code at this stage. I think they had previously indicated would be on the roof, but there might be an opportunity to put it down below on the ground level. So, that's just not something that we have available to us. I don't know if Andy wants to address that or not. And the other question was fence. So, we do show a fence or the, there is a fence shown on the site plan. It essentially envelops the site, including at the top of the bluff. And our fence code regulates the size and materials of that fence. So, they are intended to essentially wrap the hotel with the exception of the side adjacent to Lowe's with the fence. Other questions?
Awesome. Thank you. All right, that wraps up our agenda right there. So, we're gonna go on to our other business. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody wanna bring anything forward on to other business? Seeing none, other business closed. Department head reports. Come on.
Good evening, council. I'm Lance Wagner. This is from the Utility Manager. Couple of things I want to brief you on, on the Town Creek seep issue and some of the current activity going on there.
On the what now?
Town Creek seep. This is the environmental issue going on, kind of the historic district, where an underground storage tank has leaked petroleum products into the groundwater. As it comes out in Town Creek, comes out in what we call seeps. So, our colloquial name is the Town Creek Seep Issue. So, we do have, let's see, if you want more history, I can get into some history if you'd like. But the main thing I want to kind of brief you on tonight is TDEC is back out on site now and probably for the next four to six weeks. They'll be on Morton Drive. And on Morton Drive, they'll be drilling into the road and injecting an activated carbon solution into the groundwater. Now, what that means for you guys is there's gonna be some disruptions on Morton Drive. Maybe have some constituents contact you to ask what's going on. And you can direct them to me or let them know it's part of the remediation efforts for this underground storage tank.
I have been contacted. TDEC has contacted.
We've got on this issue three or four years ago, didn't we, where we're trying to find-
This is the continued remediation. They're making- This is the continued remediation. They're making progress. This is just a step in the process.
So we've already found out the location of the, the tank or the spillage or the contamination?
Maybe. And I say that because I'm.
It's not we, so.
Yeah, it's not the city of Gallatin. TDEC is running the investigation, Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, under their Underground Storage Tank Department. And so it's up to them and, and TDEC's council to, to discover that. I, I will say that there's two gas stations in the area that have been identified over the timeframe. And right now, they are working with one of them at the intersection of Hartsfield Pike and Steam Plant Road on trying to get some resolution to issues that TDEC has found on their site. So no one knows exactly where it's coming from, but TDEC kind of thinks it's in the, between those two stations or somewhere in that vicinity. TDEC has opened up funding to get this remediation through and get this remediation started. So no one entity's paying for it. On the private side, it is TDEC doing it internally. And, and so the city's not paying for this remediation. TDEC's not, or TDEC is paying for it. And we'll work that out with whoever gets appointed to in the future. But it did start back in 2018 is when we first noticed this issue and then when the city first took water samples and confirmed it was petroleum products and groundwater. And it was back in 2018 where we turned it over to TDEC. And so TDEC's been working on it since then. So in Morton Avenue, we'll have this drilling going on for the next four to six weeks. If there's any questions about that from your constituents or from yourselves, I can, I'll answer what I can tonight, or you can direct them to my office and we can answer it there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you.
And just for your information, the city of Gallatin is not responsible for the inspection or the remediation of any storage tank, underground fuel storage tanks. That's all TDEC's purview.
Or is, I remember, I remember that we was getting stuff coming through the creek and out of the ground. Has a lot of that slowed, or are we still getting that from time to time?
Again, TDEC runs the investigation. From what they've telling me, it's slowed down. So they're not seeing the same concentrations that they were back in 2019, 2020. So it seems to be thinning out. It's not official. That's just what I've heard from.
There may be more than one culprit.
There may be more than one culprit. There may be historic oils and petroleum products in the groundwater. Once it gets in the groundwater, it's very difficult to get out. And it's very difficult to treat. And it's very difficult to understand where it's at as the groundwater fluctuates.
Don't think we can get an oil well there, do you?
Can't want that one.
Yeah, I don't think it's an oil well situation. But, anyway, it is something we've been working on and working with TDEC and trying to help them out and keep them going and keep it moving forward for our citizens.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
I think Nick Tuttle, did you have something to say? Oh, he's with you.
He's with me.
All right. Do we have anybody else, any other department head? We got one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion by Councilwoman George and Councilwoman Love, whichever in that order. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.